Okay, we're going to get started. Good evening. This is the City of Nashua Board of Adjustment, the July 9th, 2024 zoning board meeting. Minutes of tonight's meeting, as well as the audio and video recordings, will be available later at NashuaNewHampshire.gov Agenda Center and Select Zoning Board of Adjustment. The Chair is in control of the proceedings and calls upon all who wish to speak in order as their raised hands are observed. The Board follows the meeting protocols, procedures identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present their case for 15 minutes, followed by questions by the Board. Next, persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition will be asked to speak up to five minutes. If there are no, if there are questions or opposition, the applicant will have five minutes to present a response. Finally, one and only one person with questions or in opposition will be permitted to speak again before the Board deliberates and determines an outcome. Again, as we go through the process tonight, we'll walk you through that process if we get there. A timer is used to manage the speaking time. Mr. Fock of the Planning Department will notify us when one minute is remaining and again the speaker's time, and then when the speaker's time has expired. Note that all votes that I've taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call. Tonight, we're going to only hear requests for variances. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the ordinance does not permit. Variances also have five points of law to be met, different from those from special exceptions. For the City of Nashua bylaws and State of New Hampshire by statute, a minimum of three or more alternate affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this Board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting Board members are present at this meeting. We have five members present tonight. Any citizen that has the right to contest the decision that the Board makes, should we render a decision that you believe is an error, you have a right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the City of Nashua Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of the decision. Should this Board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court, and again, you would contact Mr. Fock of the Planning Department for more information. For tonight's meeting, we have the following members here tonight. I'm JP Boucher. I usually serve as the clerk, but I will be the acting Chair tonight. We have Mr. Jamie Carrar and Mr. Josh Neely, who will be acting as the clerk tonight. Alternative members tonight in attendance are Mr. Andrew Sylvia and Joseph Patry. In addition to my left, I have Mr. Carter Fock, who is the Deputy Planning Manager. We're going to start the meeting by taking a roll call. Mr. McCarrar?
Present.
Mr. Neely?
Present.
Mr. Sylvia?
Present.
Mr. Patry?
Present.
And Mr. Boucher is present. Again, tonight, because there is only five of us, every member will be voting in each case tonight unless somebody decides that they need to recuse themselves. So we'll start with the first case. I'll read that into the record. I'm going to open the public hearing for case number one. For Douglas Anthony Jasalovich, owner, 103 Dodge Street, Sheet 135, Lot 221, requesting a variance from land use code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach 14 feet into the 25-foot required rear yard setback to remove an existing 10-foot by 12-foot attached three-season porch and construct an attached 25-foot, 10-inch by 30-foot two-story addition with garage under a second-level living space. It's in the I R A Zone Ward Three. Is anybody here to present their case? Just come on up to the podium, adjust the mic if you need to, and just give us your name and address, and then just tell us what you want to do. That should just bend right up.
Good evening. My name is Douglas Anthony Jasalovich, owner of 103 Dodge Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. I'm coming before you tonight to ask for approval of the variance. I've lived at 103 Dodge Street prior to my ownership. I'm 37 years old. My parents own the house before me. I was raised there. I'm a proud Nashua native. I feel that I would like to do this addition, raise a family, have goals of raising a family. This addition would definitely fit into the characteristics of the neighborhood, I feel, and some of the changes that's happened within the neighborhood, houses, other houses being built, characteristics of the size of the houses. Visually, I feel that the plans that I put forward fit within the theme, roofline, design overall, with mental impact. I have had the opportunity to talk to my immediate abutting neighbors, and they, from what I do know, have been in support. So, again, I wanted to come in front of this group and look for approval for the variance that I'm requesting. Thank you.
Are there any questions by the Board? Mr. Sylvia?
I just want to confirm that the addition's going toward 58 Bell Street?
Correct.
Okay. And you just, I was going to ask if you had talked to your neighbors. I'd say you did.
Yes. So Ron, my neighbor behind me, has probably lived behind me for the better part of 20 years. I was able to talk to him before I even went forward with the variance process, explained what I was looking to do. Again, I told him, you know, I completely understand either way. I understand that, you know, could be potentially an impact depending, seeing it's within that range. He told me he felt it was good and he liked me as a neighbor, so he didn't see any issue with that being completely straightforward. Same thing with my neighbor Bob and his wife Ashley, and then my brand-new neighbors across the street as well. So.
And just confirm what you had in your application, that there was a little bit more of a slope heading toward the railroad tracks behind your place versus going toward?
Correct. Yeah, there's an extreme drop-off from that standpoint. It levels down two times, and then it ends up going towards railroad tracks another, I'd say, 15 to 20 yards out past my property line from that standpoint. So there's just some excessive attenuating circumstances from that.
Okay. Thank you for coming. Any other questions? Mr. McCarrar?
And I know you talked about you looked at different alternatives, and they didn't work for a variety of reasons. Could you just expound on that a little bit?
Yes, so we looked at potentially doing to the side, lining it up. There are sewer, extended sewer pipes that go in front of my yard or actually encroach into my yard as a right-of-way. With that being said, I wouldn't be able to really put a driveway in a location that would be suitable to build on that far end, abutting the railroad company, from that standpoint. Back, obviously, well before my time, when that street was designed, from what I've been told or what I've heard, is there was ideas of expansion into where Copper's field was, which obviously can't be built on for various reasons. That being said, they piped it partially going further out past my house being the last one on, or being on Dodge Street. And again, we also looked at where the driveway currently sits, and that would be even closer to the property line. So from an impact standpoint, this would be the lightest encroachment request for variance.
Thank you. Any other questions by the Board? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anybody else here like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Neely?
I'm in favor of this application. We saw something recently on Bell, ironically, which made the house much bigger on a much smaller lot. I think this will fit in. You got quite a bit of different architecture changes in this neighborhood. This is a changing neighborhood on the architecture side. Great discussion about why they could not place this on either side of the house. It really needs to go to the back. I was really interested to see if the neighbor on Bell was going to be here tonight in opposition. He's not. We do have testimony that they have had discussions. They're 20-year neighbors and are in agreement. So for those reasons, I am in favor of this application.
Thank you. Mr. McCarrar?
I'm also in favor of the application for the reasons Mr. Neely stated, and also just to note that it really is quite an unusual lot, given the number of easements that it's encumbered with, the way the house is positioned on the lot. In fact, I had to go to Bell Street in order to really see, you know, where the addition would be.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'm also in favor of the application for the reasons. Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Sylvia, thank you.
Okay. In the matter of Douglas Anthony Jasalovich, owner, 103 Dodge Street, Sheet 135, Lot 221, requesting a variance from land use code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach 14 feet into the 25-foot required rear yard setback to remove an existing 10-foot by 12-foot attached three-season porch and construct an attached 25-foot, 10-inch by 30-foot two-story addition with a garage under second-level living space, I R A Zone Ward Three. I'd make a motion in favor of that. I believe that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We impart about the sewer lines, the easements, the slope toward the railroad. I believe that this is within the spirit and the intent of the ordinance. His home would still be within, would be comparable to other homes in the area. It will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. It will not be contrary to public interest, and it would provide substantial justice.
Anybody second motion? Mr. McCarrar? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? That's five to nothing. Congratulations, sir. Your application's been approved. Again, there's a 30-day window of appeal. If you have any questions, please call Mr. Fock of the Planning Department. Thank you. Have a good night. So with that, I'll close the, I'll close the public meeting for case number one and open the public hearing for case number two. Case number two is for Regina Daniel Rubery, 59 Concord Street, Sheet 47, Lot 16, requesting variance from land use code Section 190-44, to install an eight-foot tall vinyl fence with lattice top for a 48-foot long distance alongside property line from rear corner of garage to southeast property corner. It's in the I R A Zone Ward Three. Anybody here to present their case? Come on up. Again, can you give us your name and address for the record and just tell us what you want to do? You can pull that mic down.
Thanks. My name is Regina Rubery, 59 Concord Street. And what we're seeking to do is install an eight-foot fence. Although it says side property, that's because we're a corner lot, and it would be the corner at the back of our garage to the end of what appears to be our backyard, because that's our patio area, and we're looking to have a little privacy on our patio. Unfortunately, because of the slope of our yard, it's a gradual slope that becomes much more pronounced when you get to the back of the lot. We have a patio that is ground level in the front, and there's a two-foot drop in the back, actually over two feet, so that if we did a six-foot fence, which is code, then it would only be, would be four feet, so that you'd be up to here. So we're seeking aid in order to have the privacy plans actually afford us some privacy.
Okay. Was that it? All right. Any other questions?
Just to note that they did go to the Historic District Commission and got approval last month for this.
Mr. Neely?
How long has the wood and the brick patios been there? Have they been there for a while, or did you just put these in?
So we moved to Nashua during COVID. I can tell you, if you look at the pictures that I provided, that as far back as I could find on Google Maps, which is back to 20 years ago, the patio is there.
Also, Mr. Neely?
Maybe one more question. The eight-foot is pretty much solid six feet with like two feet of lattice on top?
Exactly. Yes, it's the one you see all over Nashua with the vertical flats. And we chose something we thought would kind of be in keeping with the area.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, we're all set for now. Thank you. Yes. Is anybody else that'd like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, anybody here with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting.
In terms of, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. So?
This is in my application. I just wanted to add one other thing.
Hold on, ma'am, hold on, hold on. I'll make a motion to close the public meeting, reopen the public hearing. Second? Second by Mr. Patry? All in favor? Okay. Sorry, ma'am, procedure.
I'm so sorry. The one other thing that I meant to cover and forgot was, although it is an eight-foot fence, the neighbor that would be at the end of the next yard beyond has a retaining wall with a six-foot fence on top, so we're not going to be obstructing any of their views because their fence would already, with the retaining wall plus fence, be as high as what we would be seeking, maybe even higher. So like, I did want to cover that. I didn't think that it was going to negatively impact anybody.
Okay.
So, sorry.
No, no, it's okay. All set? Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. I will close the public hearing and reopen the public meeting. I'm in favor of the application. Again, you know, looking at the property, certainly there is a drop-off there. I think it's credible, the fact that it's not like a patio that was just put in and we're looking for something. It's been there for some years. I did the same thing. I didn't go back as far back as the applicant, but I saw that it was there, so, and I did notice that this owner was newer to the site, so that gave me some comfort there. And then, obviously, with the Historic Commission giving its approval, I think that was important. So I believe that it passed that kind of test. Even though we don't have to fall out exactly, I feel good about that, so I'm going to support the application. Mr. McCarrar?
I would agree. I also support the application for the reasons that you stated, and would also just note that because of where the fence is located, the impact, you know, visually is really minimal, and pretty clearly, the abutting property owners don't seem to have a concern, those who'd be the most impacted.
Thank you. Mr. Neely?
I'm also in favor. Within the last year, we had somebody in that same general neighborhood with the same basic application with a drop-off and the eight-foot vinyl fence, and we passed it. So, once again, once, as soon as the Historical Commission signed off, I'm in favor of this.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Anybody like to make a motion? Mr. McCarrar, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that the variance application, Regina and Daniel Rubery, owners of 59 Concord Street, requesting a variance from land use code Section 190-44, to install an eight-foot tall vinyl fence with lattice top for a 48-foot long distance along the side property line from the rear corner of the garage to the southeast property corner, be approved. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought to the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We find that the patio, both the existing wooden and brick patio, were already in place, and given their location on the property and the elevation, I find that the variance is necessary to provide them with the privacy to allow them the use and enjoyment of that area of their property. We also note that the fence itself has very little impact, little to no impact on any other surrounding property, that the aesthetic impact would be minimal to the city as a whole, and that the Historic District Commission did approve the application as well. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance and would allow for reasonable use of the property. It will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels, and we had no testimony to that effect. It's not contrary to the public interest, and substantial justice would be done.
Is there a second? Mr. Sylvia, have a stand up first?
Yeah, I can get the next one.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's five to nothing. Congratulations, ma'am. Your application's been approved. But again, like I spoke before, there is a 30-day window of appeal. So just be aware of that. Otherwise, you're all set to go. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. With that, I'll close the public meeting for case number two and open the public hearing for case number three. Case number three is for Jeffrey Teepel and Lucinda Evans, owners of 1 Charlotte Street, Sheet 115, Lot 74, requesting a variance from land use code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach 12 feet into the 25-foot required front yard setback to construct an 18-by-30-foot second-story addition onto an existing house. It's in the I R A Zone Ward Two. Anybody here to present their case? Come on up, and again, just give us your name and address. And if you're both going to speak, just give us both your names, please, and your address.
I'm Lucinda Evans, number 1 Charlotte Street.
Jeffrey Teepel, number 1 Charlotte Street.
So just go ahead and speak into the mic if you could. And you can pull that out if you need to, but that's okay.
Yeah, so very simply, we're just here to ask for a variance to build a second-story addition on top of an existing one-story addition. The addition will be in keeping with the architecture of the house there now. I believe it was one of the first houses on the street originally, so, which is why we need the variance, because we're so close to the road. But the second-story addition won't be any closer than what is there now. And my wife's family's owned the house for 70-plus years, and it's always been their dream to do this second-story addition for a master bedroom, master bathroom. We got three pre-teen boys, and we're not really looking to share a bathroom with them any longer, if possible. So let's kind of...
I think that's it. When my granddad originally built the addition, it was always his plan to go up, so we're just happy if we can fulfill that for ourselves. Thank you.
Okay. Are you good? Okay. Is there any questions? Okay, there's no questions. You can have a seat. Is anybody else that'd like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Come on up, sir. Give us your name and address. And if you can pull that mic up a few, so we can...
Thank you. Harold Rich, 3 Charlotte Street. So 1 Charlotte Street's the first house on the street. So they got, well, I got almost a quarter of an acre, second house. They got the yard between our houses and behind our houses. I was land landscaping, and so I had put up a fence, and it was all woods back there, but like the privacy pot's gone. And even on my first level of my house, I had a complaint before. I had called the city for a castle that was made, because it had a platform that can, when somebody stands there, they're looking over my yard, and my yard sits down compared to their landfill up there. And just the privacy pot's gone big time. And I'm afraid if they build another story up, then it's like no, there's nothing between our yards, very little, nothing. The privacy just ain't going to be there. It's changed a lot since I lived there. It is. Changed quite a bit.
So how many feet would you say?
I put a fence up from my house to the fence line's like 10 feet away.
From your house, it's 10 feet?
So their, their property, like, the closest, yeah. Well, their house sits back further.
Right.
They got a yard there. They got all the preschool stuff there, all the daycare stuff. But it's hardly, there used to be trees, but, you know, they have, they cleaned up the yard great. They did a good job. And I, you know, everything's been good lately. I just, there's really no privacy. Now, if I let them go up there, it's just even worse, like I'm getting looked down on. Even the yard that's in my back, I put like 90 yards of loom in that yard since I moved in there. I built up my backyard, because when I put up the fence, their soil is so much higher than mine. Even though I have a five-and-a-half-foot fence, if you're standing on their side, it could be three-and-a-half, four feet on the backside. And then in the front, where it used to be covered, it's just getting bare and bare. And this is the time it should be covered, in the summer and fall, you know? I'm just, it's just privacy that's, you know, the noise the kids make, those are kids, that's fine, but the, just the overlook part of it gets me.
So what would you estimate, how many feet away would you estimate, your estimation is their house from the property line?
Oh, I'd say a good, let's say a good 25 yards. It's a distance.
Right.
But if I'm sitting in my, my yard, sitting down, and I, and their property's over there, their picture window still sees over my fence, right into my yard. It's just a, it's a different, you know, look, you know? Even though they're further away. You know, it's just, that's just the biggest thing with me, you know? They've been good people, you know? They cleaned up the place good, but it's just privacy, you know? And as far as like my first level floor, my bedroom, I don't even use that. I got two sons that are left at the house, 21s, twins, and I don't have them use that room. That room's bigger than theirs, each one of their rooms, only because I listen to that rap crap, and I won't have the windows open. I don't want that stuff being, you know, out there, you know? So just keep the peace, you know? Even if we don't get along, respect them, you know? But I mean, I just feel like I'm not getting respected in a way, you know? That's all. Privacy, just that, like, there's so much gone. It's like, I mean, I could, if they build that, it's almost like a, now my bedroom, I might as well, you know, I can look straight into their bedroom or something. It's like, why should we even have that? I mean, they got a lovely house. I understand their needs, but the privacy's gone. It's almost like if they built a fence on their property, and maybe we do it together or something, get some trees up, some kind of privacy, you know? That's, it's crazy.
We have a question from one of the...
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Rich, you actually just asked my question for me. I was wondering if it'd be possible to plant some, for the, your neighbors to plant some trees or some hedges to the height that you could get some privacy? Would that be possible?
The city puts some down by the park, but I mean, they use the yard for the daycare. I understand that. It'd be hard. I mean, like I said, their property sits up there, like down here, and then you got a fence, but they got the oversea. I'm not, you know, I'm all for those, them, but it's like, just the privacy, we have to do something with the property line, even me pitching in, whatever. Let's build, build a fence, let's put some trees there that are going to grow.
That can be a condition of the approval.
Yeah, we have to do something.
What, how tall would it have to be?
What's that?
How tall would the trees or the fence or whatever have to be?
Well, it doesn't have to go to the second story, no.
Okay.
All right. If it could cover, if it could cover, I'd say about 10 feet will cover the first bedroom window.
Okay.
You know, this way, like I can, if I'm over by the window, I can move right out.
You have to speak, you have to speak.
You know, it's not cool, you know? I don't want to do that. Nobody should do that, anything. So I kind of stay out of that. Now, where they opened up the back a little, which is their yard, it's fine. They did a good job cleaning up, but it's still higher ground. Even though my fence is five-and-a-half to me, if I was standing on the other side, you'd see all this. That's all. I feel like I'm in a, like a coliseum, and everybody's around me. I'm sorry. That's what I feel like.
So just want to help you out a little bit, just so, and I know, because when things change, and you're somewhere, and things change, it's sometimes a little tough, and like you said, when greenery comes down, but that was their property, they were the one. The reason why we're here is because they're encroaching in the, in their front yard setback, okay? They're approaching 12 feet, because it's an existing, it's an existing house that's been there. If they were back the 25 feet, so if they were, if that house was back 25 feet?
No, the house, it's a big-sized house. It sits back.
No, no, what I'm, yeah. There's, here's, I know it's sometimes difficult to understand where the, where the line is. It's not actually at the road. It's further into the property, so that's why they're encroaching, all right, in their front yard side back. It's the only reason why they're here. But what I'm trying to explain to you is, is there's approximately 75 feet of side yard that they have.
Yes.
This home could be, could have been placed behind the front yard setback, right, in the building envelope, and in that zone, it's 10 feet to the side. So this house literally could have been 10 feet from... So this house literally could have been 10 feet from the side property, 25 feet back, two stories tall, and it would be completely conforming.
Yeah.
So what I'm saying to you is, is that this house could be, could have been much closer to your property. I just want you to understand that.
No, I know, they used to own, Lang used to own that. They sold off that property years ago. But I'm just saying, but it already has a second story, so now they want to come into the, this way, second story.
Right, right. I just, yeah, I'm just trying to give a perspective that it could be much closer to the side property line. Okay. Is there any other questions by the board? All set. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Listen to me pitch.
Thanks for coming, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Is anybody else in the audience like to speak with questions, concern, or opposition? Seeing none. Sir, per our rules, you have five minutes if you choose to come up and rebut anything that was said by the opposition, or you can stay seated, it's up to you, it's your choice.
I'll just kind of say...
Okay, just come on up, and, and again, your name and address for the record, because everything's being recorded also. And then you have five minutes to, to rebut anything. And, you know, again, I just, just so, you know, I control, I like to control the meeting. We don't get into anything personal, it's just strictly what you're asking for, what, you know, was said about, whatever, okay? Okay?
Lucinda Evans.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Go ahead. Just your name, name and address again.
Lucinda Evans, number 1 Charlotte Street.
Jeffrey Teepol, number 1 Charlotte Street.
I, I know that you don't want to get into anything personal with neighbors and all that, because that's not why we're here, but you did say we are set way back from his fence, and we do have, I, I know you can't see it, but there are a lot of trees. We're surrounded by trees. My grandparents were landscapers, we plant trees. So I feel like that's our rebuttal. We will not be looking over, we don't want to look over. We're just asking for the variance because of the street. And like you said, if there is something that we need to do, we're willing to do it. So that's, that's it.
Okay. Anything else?
I think the, the gentleman, I didn't catch his name, is talking more about the backyard of his house, not the side yard that the addition will be built on. And we won't be encroaching any closer to his house, or just, that already exists now. We're just going right up. And like my wife said, there's a whole row of trees that you can't see his house.
Okay. Are you good?
That's it, yeah.
You sure? Okay. All right, so I assure you, you have a few minutes left, I just want to make sure you took all the time you needed.
That's it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sir, per our rules, you have five minutes to come back if you'd like to speak to anything that they just said. And again, just your name and address for the record.
Harold Rich, 3 Charlotte Street.
You can lift that up. Thank you.
Yes, but I am talking about the yard between me and them, and I know they're not going to be encroaching, but it's going to get taller there. And that's, like, to me, it's more overlook. And as far as trees, they're like weed trees, and there ain't much coverage. As a matter of fact, there's so much on my side in that 10-feet thing, I got to trim some because it's touching my, my siding, and that's going to give me even less space. Wow, I, I really like, that's what I'm talking, I'm just talking basically about the yard between us. And just, I think the oversea, the look down is going to be a great, that's my, I'm not saying they're going to be looking out their windows, but you got that opportunity to win. And I, even their first level's enough to look into my yard. We go up higher, that's even more, you know? And maybe even somebody from this party, if they'd like to come to my house, walk through it, I'll show them my back room and everything, and you can see it right outside the window. I keep it closed. It's just like a storage room, a whole bedroom. That's what I have it for right now, you know? Be respectful, that's all. I mean, I'm not, I'm not against them, they're good people, but privacy has to count for something. That's, it's changed so much. I know the times have changed, but it's drastic from what it was, you know? All right, thank you.
Any questions? All right, thanks for coming. With that, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Sylvia? Did you raise your hand?
No, like I could. Yeah.
Sorry.
No worries. I, from, from what Mr. Rich said, it sounds like a possible solution here is having a condition to require a 10-foot fence to alleviate the privacy concerns. Other than that, the, the second floor itself seems fine, but if we could alleviate the privacy concerns, I think a fence would be better than the tree situation, and it seems like the, the owners of 1 Charlotte Street are amenable to putting in a fence in addition to the trees. So that's just my thoughts.
Mr. McCarr.
I, I appreciate that thought, but a 10-foot fence isn't allowed under the zoning ordinance, that would require a variance.
So they have to come back for another variance on top of this?
They would.
We couldn't make that a condition of this?
No, because it's not allowed under the zoning ordinance, they'd have to apply for a variance for a 10-foot fence.
Okay.
But, but, but that's it. I, I do support the application, I think the house is where it is. It's, it's been there for many years, it's obviously grandfathered, so it is closer to the street. The addition is being proposed on top of an existing addition that's already within those same dimensions, so there is no further encroachment. So I support the variance as presented. I appreciate the privacy concern, but the distance from this, from the property line, just from my eyeballing it, is at least 60 feet, it's quite substantial. If the variance were a variance from the side yard, where it's encroaching further on the property owner, I would feel differently, but I think whereas the encroachment is towards the street, not towards the abutter, I, I don't see the need for any additional mitigation of that, and support the variance as presented.
Thank you, Mr. McCarr. Any other comments?
I also support it as presented for, for the reasons that Mr. McCarr had.
And with what Mr. McCarr said, I also support it, and thank you for the education here.
I'm going to support the application also. Any other comments? Anybody like to make a motion? Mr. McCarr, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that the application of Jeffrey Teepol and Lucinda Evans, owners of 1 Charlotte Street, requesting a variance from land use code section 190-16, table 16-3, to encroach 12 feet into the 25-foot required front yard setback to construct an 18-by-30 second-story addition onto the existing house be approved. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We note that the addition that's proposed, a master bedroom suite, is a, is a reasonable use. It's proposed on top of an existing addition, so there is no further encroachment. We also had testimony, the intent was the, to build this second story when the original addition had been built many years ago. This is a grandfathered home that's been there for many, many years, so it already, the entire home encroaches within the front yard setback. We find that it is within the spirit and the intent of the ordinance to allow reasonable use of the property. It will not adversely affect property values surrounding parcels. We did have testimony that, of concern that it would impact the privacy of a abutting owner, but we did not have testimony that it would affect surrounding property values. We found that it's not contrary to the public interest, and substantial justice would be done.
Is there a second? Mr. Neely? Thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah, definitely.
All those in favor of the application? That's five to nothing. Congratulations, your application's been approved. Again, there is a 30-day window of appeal, be aware of that. And sir, again, 30-day window of appeal from, from today, in case you want to do that. And again, contact Mr. Flock if you have any questions. Okay? Thank you for coming. With that, I'll close the public meeting for case number three, and open the public meeting, the, I'll close the public meeting for case number three and open the public hearing for case number four. Case number four is for Haniford Brothers Company, owner Jerika Grants, applicant 175 Coliseum Avenue, sheet E, lot 1489, requesting a variance from land use code, section 190-108, subsection C, section, subsection 1, to exceed maximum wall sign, 337 square feet permitted from 7/25/1995 zoning board variance granted, 365.42 square feet requested for assigned rebranding proposal. It's in a GB zone, Ward 1. Anybody here present that case? Come on up, and again, just your name and address for the record, please. If you feel comfortable pulling the mic out, go right ahead.
I'll probably drop it, sir. My name's Jason Gagnon, 225 East Industrial Park Drive in Manchester, New Hampshire. Good evening, everyone, members of board. My name is Jason Gagnon with SUSE Signs, and I am here on behalf for the applicant, Blair Image Elements, and for Haniford, says they were not able to attend. Tonight, we are here before you to ask for approval of modifying a sign variance which had been granted in July of 1995. The 1995 sign variance had seeked approval for a total of 337 square feet and pertained to a single, single exterior wall sign, which was internally illuminated, and back in 1995, the main components were neon. Today's request would be to have an approval for a new sign variance, which would equate to a total square footage of 365.4 square feet. And the reason for the increase is due to the newer company branding image that had been introduced back in 2020. Within this new signage guidelines, the options for exterior signage did see a choice reduction in overall designs, and was either choiced with a linear version or a stacked version. The stacked version is not a viable option, as the allowable square footage for that would far exceed what we are looking to do. This particular location would not only be receiving a new storefront sign, but with also a newer lighting system and a new exterior paint job for the storefront. As the variance from 1995 laid out the ground rules for the property on signage, all aspects of that decision would still remain intact and are still relevant to date. Of course, in, in, in any industry, things will evolve, and in this case, for the better. The positive notes to mention would be that the lighting system is upgraded from a neon system to a much more in-green-friendly LED lighting system. Accompanying with this would be the tree lines that have been able to grow, that have been able to grow over the years, and that will help reduce with the light pollutions, especially when it's going on the main road and the parking lot side. With the tree growth in mind, maintaining this, a sign that is visible for building recognition and location wayfinding is very essential. Making this request for a slight size increase is a reasonable one. And one of the main points is that within the parking lot side, you have the tree growth that's on the main road, that is all much bigger, so trying to increase the new branding for the sign, which is roughly about 29 square feet, is a much more easier, and it's going to make the signage allowed to be read when the trees are starting to block more from the roadside. So in closing, I would, what's being asked is obviously only a 29-square-foot increase from the original 1995s, and that the new wall sign will be spelled out by the new branding guidelines. I'd like to thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, please reach out.
Mr. Sylvia? Okay. Such a small increase, is it, at the current size of the sign, is people, customers aren't able to see it now, and this increase would change that? Seems like such a small increase, why not? I mean, would it, would it have a significant impact?
No. Very, it's, so from what I had seen from the newer branding standards, is with the linear versions, there was this style, which is about 365 square feet, point four. And then the only other version I had seen was about 160, so it's going to be about half that size. Obviously, signage is, it's a custom product, but I'm not aware, I don't have too much information on if they have an in-between version for this style.
Okay. Do they have any data on the effectiveness of the sign regarding the sizes?
Well, from a visibility standpoint, I mean, the letter set for this, which is about six feet, you know, and I know that the building with the full, like I said, you've got the tree line there, roughly about one inch of block font is roughly, I think, good for about 20 to 30 feet of visibility, where that building sits so far back that if we were to drop the size or have a much smaller sign than what was previously approved with the 1995 variance, I don't think at that point you would not be able to see the sign from any realm.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I do.
Oh, sorry.
I was struggling with the same issue. So are, are we talking about the square footage of just the one sign, or the cumulative signs that are on there, the Haniford-to-go, you've got the welcome sign in here?
Very fair question. So the Haniford-to-go sign, and then the welcome sign, that it was all considered as directional or and/or wayfinding, doesn't fall underneath the signage code from what I was understood. So the only main sign that's on this property is that one wall sign that sits on the front side.
So, okay, so, so that's...
Yeah, it's just this one sign.
And of course, that includes the little logo thing with the fruit?
Correct. It's got the shield, the Hanifords, and then the Texas's supermarket and pharmacy.
I'm all set.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Somebody else in the audience that'd like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Neely?
Yeah, I'm in favor of the application. This is updated technology, hard to believe this 29 years ago, when this, this last variance came by. Honestly, with the new technology, I think there's going to be less light coming out of that, even though it's a bigger signage, just, it's just where technology's going. Based on the neighborhood, you know, where it is these days, and, and the, the neighboring building is certainly not out of character at all, I, I actually think it'll be a really nice sign upgrade for our customers to find this easily. And I certainly think it's within character having the old, you know, the old Chunky Theater next door, there's a bunch of, of signs there as well. So for those reasons, I'm in, in favor of this.
I'm also in favor. Again, it is, it was, the original request was more than what was allowed, but two, two things. A, I don't think that I would notice a 37 extras, extra square footage. And, and secondly, the building is, I think, a large building, but it also, we all know where Haniford's is, but, but it also sits really way back. It's really, you know, it's really kind of, like I said, there's new tree line, which is fine, and then there's Home Depot and all that. So, so again, I don't think I would notice the extra 37 square feet, and so, again, large building, large face of a building. So with that, I would feel very comfortable with approving the application. Mr. Sylvia?
Yeah, I, I would feel comfortable approving it as well. I think you hit it on the head. At first, I wasn't sure what the hardship would be, given the fact that so much, it's not that much of a increase, but there are the trees and the setback that was mentioned, so I think that's enough.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I agree, and I was exactly in the same place that you were. Just make it small. So, yeah, it's not, not a big deal, but it is a, well, if it's a big deal, then why do it?
Right, right. But it's consistent with the branding, yeah, I do understand.
Anybody want to make a motion? If not, I'll do it. All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Haniford Brothers Company, owner Jerika Grants, applicant 175 Coliseum Avenue, sheet E, lot 1489, requesting a variance from land use code section 190-108, section C, subsection 1, to exceed maximum wall sign area, 337 square feet permitted from the 7, the June, July 25th, 1995 zoning board variance granted, 365.42 square feet requested for a signed rebranding proposal. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. Again, we spoke about the, the mature tree line that's existing there, the distance from the, the main road that the building is sitting... the main road that the building is sitting and where the sign would be. We find that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than the variance. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find it will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels. We find it's not contrary to public interest, and we find that substantial justice would be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Bautry. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? That's five to nothing. Congratulations. Application approved. Again, you've heard all night. There's a third-day window of appeal. Thanks for coming. Have a good night. With that, I'll close the public meeting for case number four and open the public hearing for case number five. Case number five. RAK Construction Services LLC owner, 30 Shattuck Street and L. Leighton Street, Sheet 45 Lots 237 and 261, requesting the following variances from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3. For 30 Shattuck Street, 1, for a minimum lot area in RB zone, 6,000 square feet is required, 3,696 square feet exist. 2, for a maximum density, 3,696 square feet exist, 12,446 square feet is required. 3, for a minimum lot depth, 80 feet required, 60 feet proposed. And 4, for a minimum rear yard setback, 20 feet required, 3 feet proposed. And for L. Leighton Street, 5, for a minimum lot area in RB zone, 6,000 square feet is required, 3,801 square feet exist. 6, for a maximum density, 3,801 square feet exist, 12,446 square feet is required. 7, for a minimum lot depth, 80 feet required, 60 feet is proposed. 8, for a minimum rear yard setback, 20 feet required, 13 feet proposed. And 9, for a minimum floor area ratio, .5 is required, 1.0 proposed. And for both 30 Shattuck Street and L. Leighton Street, request number 10, is the variance from Land Use Code Section 190-121, to allow separate conveyance and separate ownership of both lots as non-conforming lots. All requests to permit a two-family dwelling on L. Leighton Street and substantially renovate existing two-family dwelling at 30 Shattuck Street in the RB zone, Ward 3. Okay. We'll wait for... You're welcome. That was a mouthful.
I was going to say, that was a mouthful. Mr. Chair, but you did a wonderful job. My name is Brad Westgate, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm a lawyer with Warner Bennett, 402 Amherst Street in Nashua, representing RAK Construction Services LLC, which is the owner and applicant. With me is Rob Crowley of RAK Construction Services and Ethan Beals of Heiner Swanson. Ethan just handed out two sets of plans. One copy is our ZBA concept plan, which accompanied our application that Heiner Swanson prepared, and the other is an aerial display plan of the properties in the immediate neighborhood, large scale and as well as small scale for whichever you choose to find easy to read. As the Chair noted, this application involves two properties. One is that 30 Shattuck Street is a duplex dwelling existing, according to the assessors' records, built around 1950, and the other is a vacant lot on Leighton Street. These properties are located back-to-back. Historically, they've been two lots. Each lot's less than 4,000 square feet. The Leighton Street lot's about 3,800, Shattuck Street parcel's about 3,700. And the objective of these variances, this request, is to help facilitate the rehabilitation of the 30 Shattuck Street property, but also allow a duplex to be built sort of in tandem on the Leighton Street property. Fundamentally, the variances, although there's obviously several, and they are essentially front yard, excuse me, lot area variances for both, density variances for both, rear yard setback for both, the lot depth for both, and then on one to 50% floor area ratio on the Leighton Street parcel. It's fundamentally because it's a narrow neighborhood, and it's a narrow block. If you take a look at that aerial plan, you'll see how narrow this block is compared to the other blocks nearby. And it's really a depth problem, in a sense. That is, if the lots were in a broader block, you'd have greater depth on each lot, and therefore, this bunch of variances that we see would dwindle down. We don't need a frontage variance or a lot width variance, nor side yard variances, but because of the depth, it constrains the lot's area, therefore the density, therefore the lot depth requirements and the rear setbacks. Before the application was filed, we met with Mr. Falk, and I've talked to him several times about this, literally starting in February, because we wanted to be sure that we identified all the necessary variances and did this right in one shot. Also, early on in the spring, Mr. Crowley reached out to various neighbors, tried to see whoever he could in the neighborhood. Before we considered filing the application, to get a sense of what their reaction would be to the application, because we didn't want to do something that frankly would be very disruptive, that was not the goal, to do anything along those lines. I'm happy to say at the end of the presentation that Mr. Crowley obtained memoranda from four different people, brief memos in support or indicating lack of opposition to what's proposed, including importantly, owners at 46 Leighton Street, which is directly across from the vacant Leighton Street parcel, and also one of the two owners on 34 Shattuck Street, which goes front to back from Leighton to Shattuck and is immediately to the east of both parcels. The RB zone, which we're located in, has a 6,000-square-foot minimum lot area, the minimum depth requirement of 80 feet. This property is served by public water, sewer, natural gas, as well as electric power, telephone, and cable television, of course. It's interesting to take a look at the two immediate blocks. The block that we're located in, again, is narrow, as noted, that block has a total of 15 dwelling units, if I've analyzed the city records correctly, on that one block between Leighton, Shattuck, and then the two streets to the east and west, four of which are duplexes, and I think a four-unit multifamily as well. The block immediately to the south on Shattuck Street is also relatively densely developed, has at least four duplexes, two four-unit buildings, and a six-unit building. Of course, on the other side of Leighton Street, you change zones to the RA district, so there you're going to see a number of single-family homes, more so than duplexes. And as you can tell from both the concept plan we submitted and the aerial plan, we're in a small group of four lots right in the middle of this block. The two to our left, our west, if you will, are essentially of the same acreage that we are, very close, and then the two to the right are the ones you see that are before you tonight. Going further to the west, you'll see a block that goes front to back, Leighton Street to Shattuck, that's the four-unit building. So similar size, if you will, to what we are and those other two next to us. Obviously, this neighborhood has a fairly diverse mixture of housing types and styles. One aspect of the application is, if you see on our concept plan, there's an extension in the back end of the Shattuck Street house that goes into the Leighton Street lot a little bit. That's going to have to come off, obviously, so that it doesn't encroach into the Leighton Street lot. But it does generate the need for a rear yard variance of approximately three feet. The Leighton Street house that we'd like to build, that duplex, also is seeking a variance about, to allow about 13 feet into that, rather than the 20 feet setback from that property. But we're, again, back-to-back lots, so we're not seeking rear yard setback variances from any of butter. We're seeking it literally from ourselves. Take a moment, if I may, Mr. Chair, to just address the five criteria for the granting of a variance. The first, of course, is that the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, and we would respectfully submit that it's not contrary to the public interest to allow variances from the minimum lot area density requirements and the related provisions I noted, including the lot depth issue. When you have two historic lots, similar size to each other, similar in size to the two adjacent properties to the west, which would enable the ability to build a new duplex on Leighton Street, would help facilitate, if you will, the renovations to the existing dwelling at 30 Shattuck Street, when this lot can accommodate on Leighton Street a duplex, as evidenced by the historical nature of these separate parcels. And they're situated in, as I noted, a narrow block that's relatively densely developed, fairly densely developed, in fact, and in a neighborhood that's got a significant amount of dense development and various pockets. We'd also submit that it's not contrary to the public interest to allow these variances, because the public, the city's master plan and the land use code both have an objective of encouraging infill development. This is a classic infill development situation, albeit we realize it's smaller lots perhaps than the board has seen in similar cases, but not in every case. And allowing this would meet that objective in the master plan and the land use code. And of course, we're in the RB district, and the idea of creating infill development is to allow some additional small but good housing alternatives in the closer parts of the city. Second criteria is that the spirit of the ordinance be observed. We think the spirit of the ordinance comes from its purposes, and these purposes, again, contemplate promoting infill development in these parts of the city. Also, of course, renovating an existing dwelling that's in relatively poor condition is never contrary to the spirit of the ordinance. We don't need new infrastructure as well, which is always a plus when adding to the city's housing stock. Third criteria is substantial justice be done. We would submit that permitting the construction of this duplex would, with these accommodating variances, does substantial justice, because substantial justice is done if the general public realizes no appreciable gain if the variance is denied, but the applicant's materially adversely affected. In this case, there's really no gain to the public if the variance is denied, but the denial would preclude the construction of the infill duplex that we proposed. Fourth criteria is that the use not diminish the value of surrounding properties. We would submit that any kind of renovation along these lines, making sensible use out of an infill lot, does not adversely affect surrounding property values. New construction in an existing neighborhood tends to be positive for those. I'm going to, at the end, submit a letter from Rod Clermont, a longstanding broker in the city, who comes to that conclusion. And lastly, special conditions supporting the finding of hardship. So as the board is well aware, finding an unnecessary hardship requires that there be no fair and substantial relationship between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and its specific application in this case, and secondly, the proposed use being a reasonable use. So it's a two-part test, as the board knows. We think there's a number of special conditions. I've really already noted them. First and foremost, of course, we're located in a long-existing, well-established, relatively densely developed neighborhood in the RB district. We're on a narrow block, it sort of squeezes the depth, if you will, out of lots on both streets. We're on a block that, our immediate block, has other duplexes, as well as the four-unit building. And the block just south of Shattuck Street has the multifamily buildings that I previously mentioned. Leighton Street parcels and infill lot, as noted as well, but it can adequately accommodate the duplex dwelling evidenced by its lack of need for a frontage lot width variances. So we put those special conditions on the table, analyze them against the hardship test, focus on the purposes of these zoning provisions, and they're presumably established to provide appropriate land area for the development of permitted uses in the RB district. A duplex, by the way, being a permitted use, so no use variances needed. 30 Shattuck Street property can adequately function on its own as a duplex, effectively has, although of course, the lot behind it, Leighton Street, has been in common ownership. If the Leighton Street lot is developed, it can also function as a viable duplex. Again, it's not squeezing the side yards, if you will, because it's got the sufficient frontage. So we'd respectfully submit that these special conditions do show that the finding of unnecessary hardship can be met. At the end of our application, I make reference to Section 190-121 of the Land Use Code, and the board doesn't deal with this that often, but I know you have before, and this is the section of the code that talks in terms of, I don't want to use the word merger, because it's got too many legal oddities still, but it effectively renders a conforming lot and a non-conforming lot as one, if you will, for certain abilities to separate, allow separate ownership and separate conveyance. Mr. Falk and I talked about the applicability of that section, and I sort of pressed the point, saying, well, if the board feels, and I also feel, that the provision 190-121 would preclude separate ownership of the two parcels, then I should request that as one of the variances, so that if the dimensional variances are granted, then 190-121, that talks about merger, if you will, I put in quotes, conforming and non-conforming lots, won't preclude this separate ownership. So that's the reason we put that in our application. It's sort of a corollary, if you will, to the requested dimensional variances. Just if I may, before closing, Mr. Chair, submit to each of you the four memos of support of neighbors and abutters, and then the letter of Mr. Clermont, relative to property values.
Mr. Patrick can grab that for me.
Yeah.
In the package of the butter handouts that I passed out, Mr. Chair, the 46 Leighton Street and the 34 Shattuck Street are the first two, the one across the street and the one right next to us, lying to the east. We appreciate your time in observing this information we gave you, and obviously, any of us have to answer any questions.
Mr. Mancarell.
I do have a question, but I have to say, I just realized that one of the signers of this letter and directed butter across the street is a coworker of mine, and I don't know that that necessarily means that I cannot make an impartial judgment, but I do want to bring that up for the board, and I'd be interested in hearing your thoughts as to whether I should recuse myself from this matter, realizing that that would take it down to a foremember board.
My feeling is that if you feel that you can be impartial, that's my position, and really, it's up to you, but how strongly, you know, you feel one way or the other. But I think if you feel impartial, I think that's all.
I do, but I did want to bring it to the board's attention.
Also, Mr. Mancarell, I'm guessing you have nothing to gain financially or otherwise you or your family by granting this or not granting this, so...
I do not.
So that's a big thing, if there's something to gain by, which you don't really.
Thank you. So now, I do have a question.
You did touch on the benefit of allowing the duplex to enable or help support the renovation of the existing duplex. Could you just expand on that a little bit?
So Mr. Crowley has actually started this renovation, and I've looked at him, no add to that effect. And one way or the other, that property will be renovated, 30 Shattuck Street, there's no question, irrespective of what happens tonight. It's when a builder such as Mr. Crowley buys a property like this... It's when a builder such as Mr. Crowley buys a property like this, and obviously, significant work's going to be done on the existing home, if some value can be gained from the other lot, if you will, it provides a better economic basis in order to make the renovations a greater reality. It's really kind of as simple as that. So it's, in the abstract, each property stands on its own, each property should justify itself, in a sense, for its own investment, its own ability to be viable in the marketplace, but the two combined have a little bit of a synergy. But again, he will renovate Thirty Shattuck Street no matter what, no question about that.
Thank you.
Mr. Patrick.
I assume that none of the neighbors you talked to had any opposition or concerns?
I'll let Mr. Crowley come to the podium. The four that he showed support of certainly were fine. Mr. Crowley talked to others as well, some of whom did not sign anything, and if some had questions or concerns, let them know, Rob.
Just your name and address again for the record.
Good evening, it's Rob Crowley. What, my office address or my home address?
Office address.
Three-three-nine Main Street in Ashura, New Hampshire. That was obviously a concern of mine, looking at the, all the houses right around it, they were very similar, the lots were the same size, actually, or very close. So I talked to the neighbor to my left of Leighton, if I'm in the Leighton Street lot facing Leighton Street, the one on my left, they were very supportive. I just had a hard time getting them to email me and to put it in writing. There was a lady on the first house on the left of Leighton, nice lady, talked to her and her husband, they were very supportive, and then, of course, there's another one on Shattuck Street, but just trying to get everybody, some of them are just reluctant to sign, I don't know, I'm showing up saying, "Hey, I want to do this," will you sign? It's kind of weird, to be honest, so some of them just, you know, just couldn't get them to sign it or whatnot, but I did get four that did sign, but the ones, the other ones I talked to was at least three that were also supportive of it. It's really, it's been an eyesore for a long time, the yard is just a mess, the house was even, is even more than a mess, and, you know, they all seemed excited to clean that all up. So the short answer is yes, I did get, I did get no opposition, and I talked to seven different addresses or people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
So, turning Westgate, in the process, were there any other, any other thoughts on how to renovate this property, or any other options that you might have thought of in the process? And if you can share those, what were those, and, you know, again, why not viable?
No real, and Rob will correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Crowley, sorry. No real different alternatives relative to the existing house, Thirty Shattuck Street. We did think through and talk through a single-family home as opposed to duplex on the Leighton Street parcel, no question about that. I think the thought partly was that we're next to each other, if you will, we're back-to-back with each other, and whether it's a single-family home or a duplex, essentially, the same variances are going to be needed, even density, lot area, depth. Setback may be a little bit different, that is the rear setback, but again, that's somewhat of an academic exercise, we thought. But we did analyze and think through, certainly with Andrew Swanson, whether a single-family approach would be different and a possible. And certainly, it is a possibility, admittedly.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? I guess we're set.
Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Neely.
So when I received this application, and I first took a look at it, I thought, wow, this is, there's quite a bit going on here, quite a big ask. It was well-written, but quite, obviously, we don't see this many variance requests in one application very often, in fact, I've never seen this many. That being said, it makes more sense when you get there and you see the property. So you take a look at Thirty Shattuck, it's in poor condition, it needs to be upgraded. I think that's going to be an upgrade to the neighborhood to get that fixed, I can totally see why that back addition is going to be taken off. When you take a drive around to the Leighton side, I looked at, if I had just driven up and not had the map with me, I just really thought it was one oversized lot, and in that neighborhood, it would totally be in character for the smaller lots. You know, now that we've seen the maps, you know, everything is very similar in size, quite a few back-to-backs, it makes sense for these variances to go through. I do think a duplex on the Leighton side is within character of this neighborhood, when you take, I mean, the architecture around there is varied, so it's certainly within character of the neighborhood. I mean, this is certainly what the city is trying to do, is to clean up, for lack of a better word, overgrown lots. I mean, it just doesn't look great when you drive over there and take a look at it. So I do think a duplex is a nice addition to that area, so overall, I am in favor of this. In addition, you know, we had four neighbors that signed affidavits that are in favor, we've got a letter here from Rod Clermont, and while he says he is working with these folks, he does not see any reduction in the value of the properties in the neighborhood, and I agree with that. Certainly no issues with hooking into the utilities that are all there, ready to be had, so I actually think this is a great project, and wish you the best of luck on that.
Mr. Sylvia.
The only thing I was curious about was the combination, possible combination of the lots, but that was addressed in the paperwork and just by the attorney, so I'm all set.
I also, when I first got the application, I was a little concerned, but after going driving by and understanding what the lots are, and being familiar a little bit with, I just know some, I know somebody who owns some rental property, who owns property on Jefferson Street, which is just south of that, and the house is literally two feet from the property line, and you own several of those like that, so it's not exactly here, but it's kind of typical, so it's not, I don't think it falls out. And as you say, as you go north of Leighton Street, you're getting into a different zone, so it's a completely different thing. So I think, in the long run, I think it's, would be in that benefit for the neighborhood because there's no opposition to it. I think it does clean up the neighborhood, I think it does, it will bring up values, in my estimation, that's just my thing, a new duplex, a renovated home, I think will bring some life, more life, as far as, you know, upping the values of homes in that neighborhood. I think it's a positive thing, and again, I was just curious about what options there were to develop that back lot. Single-family home, we can always look at that as, yeah, that may be seen more or less intrusive, but I think sometimes, you know, you don't know how many people are going to live in that home and what the style is and all that, so, but I do think that, again, because of the number of duplexes or multifamilies in this area, I think that it does fit into the neighborhood. So for those reasons, I'm going to support the application.
Mr. McCarron.
Just to expand on that, I also support the application. I had the kind of same, I struggled a little bit with, well, gee, it could be a single-family home, and it seemed as though, yeah, sure, it could be, there was no compelling reason why it was a duplex, apparently. And the density is, the density is higher, but that said, a single-family home is not what's proposed, a duplex is, and as I look at it and the surrounding area, I think it's reasonable, so I support it for that reason. I also felt, gee, there's a lot of asks on this list, but, you know, pretty clearly there is no opposition from the surrounding neighborhood, and, you know, once again, renovating that existing home and cleaning up this lot is definitely a benefit to the neighborhoods.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion, or you'd like to make a motion? If not, I'll do it. All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for RAK Construction Services, LLC owner Thirty Shattuck Street and L. Leighton Street, Sheet 45 Lots 237 and 261, requesting the following variances from Land Use Code, Section 190-16, Table 16-3. For Thirty Shattuck Street, one, for a minimum lot area in RB Zone, 6,000 square feet is required, 3,696 square feet exist. Two, for a maximum density, 3,696 square feet exist, 12,446 square feet is required for a minimum. Three, for a minimum lot depth, eighty feet required, sixty feet proposed. And four, for a minimum rear yard setback, twenty feet required, three feet proposed. For L. Leighton Street, request number five, for a minimum lot area in RB Zone, 6,000 square feet is required, 3,801 square feet exist. Six, for a maximum density, 3,801 square feet exist, 12,446 square feet required. Seven, for a minimum lot depth of eighty feet required, sixty feet is proposed. Eight, for a minimum rear yard setback, twenty feet required, thirteen feet proposed. And nine, for a minimum floor area ratio, .5 is required, 1.1 is proposed. And for both Thirty Shattuck Street and L. Leighton Street, request number ten, variance from Land Use Code, Section 190-121, to allow separate conveyance and separate ownership of both lots as non-conforming lots. All requests to permit a two-family dwelling on L. Leighton Street and substantially renovate existing two-family dwelling at Thirty Shattuck Streets in the RB Zone, Ward Three. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property given the special conditions of the property. Again, discussion surrounded around the fact that this is a well-established existing neighborhood, is a dense, is some dense lots, and its density in this area is pretty evident by the several of the multifamilies and the small lot sizes. We find that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue then the variance. It is within the intent of the ordinance, it will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels, it is not contrary to public interests, and substantial justice will be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance. Mr. McCarron, second. Any discussion? All in favor? That's five to nothing. Congratulations, your application approved, and as you know, the thirty-day window of appeal exists. Thanks for coming. Right, you're welcome. With that, I'll close the public meeting for case number five, and we have some other business, right? We have.
Yeah, meeting, Jennifer, it's going to be, oh, wait, there's another thing, a rehearing request.
Yes, you just go ahead, Mr. Fock.
There was a, well, there are two.
The meeting's still going on, so you have to give us a few moments, okay?
There's a rehearing request for Two and L. Oldfield Road, and staff has determined that we did not notify two of the abutters, so I think automatically the board should grant a rehearing for those two. No other real discussion necessary, just, I think we should grant it, and we'll have them come back.
Make a motion to approve the rehearing?
Anybody second, Mr. McCarron? All in favor? That's five to nothing.
So that'll be coming back, I'm not sure if it'll come back in the same fashion, but it'll be coming back. Thank you.
Any else?
No, that was, given our side.
All right, so we have meeting minutes from June 25th, correct?
Yeah.
All right. Anybody see anything, Mr. Patrione?
I did, so on page twelve, Manny Espiti, his name is misspelled at the bottom of the, at the bottom of the page, his last name is E.S.P.I.T.I.A., and then, page thirteen, Matty's last name is Greg, G.R.E.G.G.
So noted.
And the only other, page eighteen, about the skunk cabbage, I, the minutes have Mr. Sylvia asking about the cabbage being stepped on, I think I had asked that question, actually.
I think you might have.
Okay. I hadn't, I hadn't said skunk cabbage in an official proceeding before, so.
Not willing to. I'd agree with you on that.
Any other corrections or anything that anybody has? All right, I'll make a motion to approve the June 25th, 2024 meeting minutes.
As amended.
Second by Mr. Patrione, all in favor? Five to nothing.
I didn't stand.
One to nothing. Mr. McCarron, Mr. Upstace. Any other business for the board?
Are we due the motion on possible regional impact for the next meeting? Because I don't see anything, but I thought we had to do.
Yes, I didn't see any impact.
I didn't either, I just thought we had to do a motion.
Yeah, it's just a check, basically, it's not really a motion, just a.
Okay, I didn't see anything.
And I would agree, I don't see any.
Okay, with any other discussion?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn at 7:55, so done.